All right to call this meeting to order. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented. Motion by Mr. Scurvy, second by Mr. Reader. Any additional discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two, update on 2022 Capital Project Sales Tax Commissioners, Ms. Karen Brimmer. And I will say, as she's coming to the podium, we have Mary Arrowood, who is zooming in with us. Hello, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Good evening. Tonight, we're to discuss some of the issues for CPST that is upcoming for the 2022 ballot in November. You have each in front of you a notebook that is basically broken down from the annotated agenda that has all the portions in there so that you can keep them in their tabs so they're easily accessible for any of those sections. Just to let you know, the CPST Commission has been fielded. We have appointed by the county Sid Crumpton, Roy McClurkin, and Lisa Tolan. Appointed by the city were Cornelius Cromer and Allison Johnson, and the two of them appointed from Prosperity, Renee Jorner. Renee Jorner and Lisa Tolan have both served on the CPST Commission for more than one time. Both were on last year as well as the 2010. The orientation for the commissioners to give them the direction that they will, the statutes that they must follow and things of that sort will be held tomorrow night at six. All are, have said they would be present. Mr. Sid Crumpton will have to zoom because he's out of town. Theo DeBeauz has, is here with us tonight. In case there are additional questions that we may have for him, he also has the updates on the funding that will be estimated as of right now. Let's see. And then for the commissioners, there will be a follow-up committee meeting for them to set their schedule that when they have their presentations, when things will be presented to them so that they can create the ballot to present to you by May. We have included in your annotated agenda, Theo has given us a preliminary estimate of $30 million for CPST collections. He can elaborate more on that because we have to be cautious depending on how the economy is going. Theo, would you rather elaborate now as we go or later or which would be easier?
I'm happy to do that now.
Okay.
Theo, thank you for being here with us tonight.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief. In 2010, council used a working estimate of, I think, $15.6 million for funding available. And in 2016, that went up to $21 million. That includes not only revenue from the capital sales tax if it is re-imposed, but it also includes revenue from the prior capital project sales tax. So in that case, we're talking tonight about the one that was imposed after the 2016 referendum. That goes to April of 2024. My current projection is the county will have collected enough sometime in 2023 to pay off all bonds. And the rest of the collections, be that three or four quarters, would be available for projects as well. So in one sense, how much is going to be available depends on future collections. It depends in a real sense on actual collections through April of 2024. And then it's up to the county to decide how much of potential collections thereafter to also put into the project. What I mean by that is the county's been discounting collections anywhere from 10% to 15%. Taking a look backwards, say eight quarters, at the time, a decision actually has to absolutely be made, which is sort of in May of next year, I would say. Looking back two years, here are average collections, and do we want to discount that in coming up with final numbers? Why would you do that? The county, in the four iterations that it has undergone capital project sales tax, has issued bonds shortly after the referendum, funded projects immediately for the most part, and then used sales tax collections in the following seven years to pay off those bonds. These are general obligation bonds of the county, which means that if the sales tax collections were not sufficient, then it would be up to the county to put on a property tax. And it has been the position of past councils and administration that that is the first thing that you don't want to do. And so rather than try and budget every nickel that comes in from the potential sales tax, there's been some conservatism, budgeting 90% or 85% of what you expect collections will be. And you have that money at the end of the project if you need to. In 2010, it went to unfunded projects that you didn't issue bonds for or can be used for the next round of projects. So that's a decision to be talked through. I can tell you that the past three cycles, we were using anywhere, I think, from 600,000 to 800,000. And taxes in Newberry County have really taken off in the past three years where we've seen collections, based on a budget figure of 800,000 a quarter, we've seen collections of in excess of 1.3 million a quarter. So that's good news. And certainly build that growth into the model, and the question will be how much of that growth to build into the model. Again, that really first speaks to how large of a bond issue you do. You'll still collect the money, just means it would be available at the end of the cycle to spend. So I'll be talking to the county financial advisor about bringing that model current. And in looking at it and using the same methodology that we've used for the past 20 years, as Karen said, my estimate is $30 million, and I can see that going up 10%, perhaps. But we haven't nailed down what sort of discount factor to use if we'll need to do that. The last thing, just because I've been asked this in other locales, what did COVID do to sales tax collections? And the answer is, across the state, in one quarter, it depressed sales taxes. That seemed to have built up demand, and at the end of the year, nobody knew it. And the sales tax collections didn't suffer from COVID. As long as you can keep retail outlets open, you're going to, you're going to collect sales taxes. It just didn't have an impact within the type of measurement period we're talking about. Mr. Chairman, glad to take any questions.
All right, gentlemen, any questions?
How much, in excess of what we predicted for this past cycle, are we looking at? We're going to, see, I don't know if that's a question for you, Theo, or Debbie.
That's a fair question. I think it would be between seven and eight if it stayed at the high end of where we've seen collections for the past four quarters. We'll know when we get there, obviously, but that's based on what's in the bank now and what I think will happen for the next two quarters, next two years, rather.
So if we have the seven or eight million basically in our account at the end of this cycle, how does that, does that move forward to the next cycle?
It does. State law says two things about that. Well, it says three things. The first thing, you use collections not required to pay bonds or something for, is to pay any cost overruns for projects that were on the 2016 ballot. And I think that's a pretty modest number, just talking to Karen about that. The next thing is it gets carried forward. It's treated as tax collections for the next cycle. If the capital project sales tax, however, is not reimplemented, this is the end of the road, at least for this election cycle, then it is up to council to allocate that money. But it can only be used for the same type of projects that the Capital Project Sales Tax Act allows. So whether you collect it now or after implementing, you still are limited to the types of projects.
The same types of projects, but not those previously identified and approved by ballot.
That's right. 2016, you finish those first, and then you can spend it, and it is at the direction of council.
So they're still dictated by Code 410-3030, I think it is? Is that the one that dictates what we could spend it on?
The different types of projects?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And that's road, streets, and bridges, and parking garages, administrative facilities, civic centers, detention facilities, water and sewer, recreation, cultural, and historical.
So your projection of 30 million does not?
It does.
It does include the?
That's about 22 plus eight.
Okay. I wondered, I thought, boy.
Yeah.
Y'all was thinking, we had really gotten some increases. Yeah.
All right. Anything, any other words of wisdom, Mr. Booth?
No, we'll keep updating staff on where that model is. And like I said, I think at some point, a consensus on what type of discount factor to apply to projected future collections. We've been real good on a good 20-year cycle on sales tax collections in South Carolina. There was a little retrenchment in 2008 and 2009, but measured over 20 years, it's been pretty good.
Other questions with Theo? Mary?
No.
Okay.
Just, just one other thing. Theo, I had called you and asked you a question about whether or not a municipality in the county could jointly sponsor a project.
Sure.
And you indicated there could, but there would be certain caveats about ownership, maintenance, and that sort of thing. Could you elaborate a little bit on that for me and for others that might be listening?
Sure. The, there are really two separate concepts. One, the statute says that any two or more political subdivisions can jointly do a project of the type in the, in the list. The county has been using more wisely, I think, the procedures of sponsoring projects and having them pre-qualified by an engineering review to make sure that the cost estimates for the capital are adequate and that the sponsoring entity can show the ability to maintain the project. If you're going to do a joint project, you need to have an agreement, I would think, to show how those costs would be split up. There's a, it's not a standard agreement, but South Carolina law recognizes, as part of the Constitution, intergovernmental agreements for joint administration and cost sharing. That needs to be reduced to writing. If city and, if city of Newberry and the county were to jointly sponsor, well, a civic center, I'll use something that's, I don't think you're going to build an 8,000-seat performing center here like they have in Greenwood. I doubt that's in the cards right now. But if you were going to do it together, you're going to decide who's going to own it and who's responsible for maintenance, who's responsible if there's a shortfall. That's a lot more detail than is required on the ballot. It's really something that Mr. Adams put in 16 years ago because those questions weren't getting addressed. So it's really part of the county's process, and I think it's a good idea to decide before you put it on the ballot if everybody at the table is on the same page.
Other questions, Joan? All right. Do you want to continue, Karen, you coming back to the podium?
You have the statute, your statute in your packet. You know exactly which projects can be included for what purpose. There's also specifics as to who can present a project.
If you come back to the podium, because I don't think Mary can hear.
I can't hear either. I can't hear much of anything anyway.
I'm sorry. Also included was the, a copy of 4-10-330 so that you can see what projects are eligible to be funded by CPST collections. It's very specific. You cannot add to it. It's all in state statute. So in the past, the county has used funds for water and sewer through the Water and Sewer Authority as well as the city. We've used funds for recreation. We've used funds for the different municipalities as for repairs or some construction to their buildings. Of course, here in our area, we don't have the beach access and nourishment or the dredging in our area, but the cultural recreation has been used through the Opera House as well as the museum. And in 2010, we had funds spent for the Council on Aging. So those, all those projects, you know, they fell into these categories. Anything outside of these categories are taken out before we even get to the cost estimation portions. We have had one project last year for Silver Street. They wanted to demolish the old school. You cannot just demolish something. You have to construct something after the demolition takes place. We've had one request so far this year to question about cleaning up an area, and we will get back with them with the details on that, that they, that you can't just demolish something and clean off an area. You'll see later in our discussion on some of the ideas that have been presented by the departments within the county. But to get back to where we were, I'm sorry, these books don't work too well on a podium. We had a meeting on November the 2nd just to inform the municipalities of the CPST process. We presented them with the same information on what types may be funded, what entities are considered, those that can sponsor projects. We had attendance by the city, the Town of Little Mountain, Town of Prosperity, the Town of Homaria. We also had attendance from the Opera House, from the museum, and the Council on Aging. Trying to think if it was even, the Water and Sewer Authority was there. We discussed during that meeting that council has put in the budget $75,000 for the engineering construction portion to give us cost estimations on these projects. That does not include specific projects such as water and sewer. They use very specific engineering for those. This is for general area. In the past, we have offered this estimation to the municipalities as well. The funding is limited, so we will have to make a decision if they're, if the projects exceed what we think that, what the engineer thinks that amount may be in case we can't do them all. We ask the municipalities, when they submit their proposals, that they prioritize them so that we'll know which one is most important to them, and it won't be left up to either staff or the commission to just try to figure that out. We've asked for their help in, in that area, too. The criteria that was set is part of Resolution 06, excuse me, 10-21 is the one that we adopted a few weeks ago. So it's the same criteria that we used last time to get the most accurate construction estimates, also to, for the sponsoring entity to provide documentation on their acceptance for cost overruns, their indications of how they fund the operation so that as he was, as Theo was saying about the joint project, those things are worked out prior to getting to the commission. You have the answers on those before the commission starts to make their deliberations on what goes to the ballot. Included in that resolution was a schedule for council, your council's meetings for CPST. Of course, we have our meeting tonight. The proposals are due to be turned into crystal tomorrow on the 9th for the engineering consulting services. Those will be evaluated, and that evaluation will be presented to council on November the 17th at its regular meeting for your approval to move forward with the engineering service. Once we have that, once we have that made, that decision made, we'll be able to meet with them to express, at that point, if we have projects, we can, you know, show them some of the things we have to cost estimate. Right now, all we have in hand is the cost, is the project ideas from the county departments. The city has already indicated that they have some, and, but he hasn't turned, hasn't forwarded anything to us. We haven't received anything from them specifically yet. They have, anyone seeking council sponsorship has until November the 30th to return their notice of intent to submit. Those are just basic forms that say, this is my project, this is where it's going to be located, and this is what the project will do. There is not a formal cost estimation on that, on that part. After we receive those, and once we receive the engineering firm, we'll be able to go forth and get those cost estimations for the entire portion of that project.
Not by specific companies, but how many proposals have we received to date?
None.
And the-
And they may be waiting till tomorrow?
Close, yeah, to close your time tomorrow for those proposals.
Three o'clock.
Pardon?
Three.
Three o'clock tomorrow, okay.
After that, we have preliminary scheduled a meeting on November the 22nd for council to meet again to discuss what direction you want staff to follow in the projects that have been presented throughout the county. We've got a list of that in your information of the ideas that have been presented by the different departments. We'd like your input on what you think would be best fit for this. We've given you some ideas on, when I get to the next section, you'll see the idea, the first idea that's on there. But we've given you those to see what some of the departments think are needed within the county. We don't know yet what we're going to receive for council sponsorship. I, I do know we're going to get one from the museum. They're asking for roof replacement because they actually sent us some information way prior to this. Outside of that, I have not seen anything or heard anything from any specific organization. The YMCA did pick up a package, a notice of intent earlier today, but as far as any details behind it, we don't know what that was for. Because they're one that would have to seek sponsorship from one of the municipalities. Later, once we get a score, the 30th is the deadline for any, any agency to present for council sponsorship. Those we'll have in hand by then. February the 4th has been set as the deadline for the engineering firms to have the proposals for council project, council-sponsored projects, so that we can have the presentations made to council. Each asking entity, each asking department or each project will do a presentation, as we did in the past, for you to see, some use PowerPoints, some use handouts. They were, they will be recorded here in the council chambers so that the, not only can the public see those, but should you want to review anything that was said in those that may not necessarily be written down on a piece of paper, you'll be able to go back and look at them as well. Usually, it takes at least two nights for those. I would not anticipate it being able to be crammed into one. We did try to limit them to a certain amount of time, and we will do that again this year so that they have it as finite as they can with as much information that can be held within that amount of time. On March the 16th, council will have to determine which projects they want to move forward to the commission. At that time, we will submit to the commission formally that these are the county-sponsored projects. And then the same, the same presentations will have to be done again during the commission's schedule. Once March 16th is finished, the council doesn't have to do anything else with CPST until the commission completes their part of the process and develops the ballot. Once they develop the ballot, we'll hand it off to council. I didn't write that down, and I was looking to see, I think it's May the 18th, for council to make their decision as to whether we support the ballot or we don't. There will be no changes once that's, once that comes from the commission. The priority order cannot change. Nothing can be taken off and nothing can be added. You get the ballot from the commission, and you either approve it to move forward to a referendum or you don't. It takes that much time from May to the November ballot in order to have everything ready, advertised properly. And I'm sure it's with the election commission, they have a certain exact number of days that things have to be done in order for something to be on the ballot. Once we reach that stage and if the ballot is ready to go to a referendum, advertisement, funds cannot be used from the county to make any type of advertisement. No county employee can use their work time to promote the referendum as well. But usually, there are those from the outside that have projects that they are looking for that help on that promotion. For potential projects, this has been some staff discussion. These are only here for your information only. This does not say that this is the one that staff totally supports, but we wanted you to know how things were going with what we have received. As most of you know, our detention facility is going to have to be replaced. We have not been told as of yet that we have to do it. We have, according to the sheriff, we have a harder time each time they come for inspections, whether it be the Department of Corrections or it be the fire marshal. The sheriff has offered maybe an alternative to building one. This alternative would be to build a pod to house the pre-trial inmates, if the current location would allow for that to be constructed, and if the infrastructure will handle that as well without it having to go through major changes. This would be another temporary fix. I asked the sheriff and Daniel, both are here tonight. They can offer much more in detail, just so that you know. The minimal estimates the sheriff was given was 20 to 30 million dollars. That would take up your whole CPST collections. We don't anticipate that, to, to ask for anything of that sort. But we wanted you to know that that is out there, is still lingering. It was lingering from the last CPST. We did some improvements to help with things, but because of the age of the jail, it is constantly, you know, deteriorating for one reason or another. If you'd like, the sheriff or Daniel, both, one or the other, or both, can offer any question, they can answer questions that you may have when it regards to that. I've also sent Theo some correspondence asking, could we possibly use a portion of CPST and fund the balance through another source? He's looked into that, he has some answers for that as well. But before we get into their discussions, I just want to tell you about the others that are on the list that you've received. Those are what staff solicited from the departments. There's, I have some detail that they sent with these. I've also asked them to fill out the notice of intent, which actually is a more formal way of getting their answers for what they propose for these projects. I've received only one so far. I look to receive those over the next few weeks, and I will forward them to you as they come in so that it won't be all at one time, so to keep you in with that. And as well as you know, we will have other entities that are going to ask for council sponsorship. We don't know anything specifically other than what's been mentioned to us from the museum and the Council on Aging. But if the sheriff and Daniel will, if they don't mind coming up, if you've got questions for them, they can answer specifically on that one for the new detention center. That would come more clearly from them than from me.
We're here.
Thank y'all for being here.
Tell us a little bit about the project.
Well, of course, the detention center's been there since 1973. It went through an upgrade.
2004.
And then again, 2004, and then again during this-
2017, 16.
And both of them were listed as the next measure before we build one. And the 2004 one, we actually had the financing available to do that. That was before capital project sales tax. What fell apart, and financing was made through a, what's it called, revenue bond there?
At least the installment purchase?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were going to use the revenue from the federal marshals to pay for it. And at the time, Israel Brooks was the US Marshal, and he had, he had gotten a rather substantial amount of money to use. However, we ran into some difficulties with finding a location. And by the time we couldn't agree on the location, the money had run out, and it wasn't made available again. So we just put in some money to repair it. And then the last capital sales tax project, same situation. And we put some money in there and tried to fix the other building. Again, it's a 1973 building, it's, it's out of date. It's out of the standards of what we use now in corrections. The biggest problem we got is, is just, it's a maintenance nightmare. However, we're not under any kind of sanction right now, but every time we meet, it's like, you need to do this, and you're deficient in, in state standards. Excuse me. We realize that's an expensive project. It's probably one of the most expensive things the county can do. And we do realize that it would take up just about everything, if not all, of the sales tax projects. However, it would be a lovely way of paying for it because you could have a jail and, paid for in seven years versus a jail that would probably take how long to pay off? With 25 years or 30 years on the bond. But we understand the circumstances around it. You got $30 million to lay out, and a jail is a tremendous liability, a necessity, but it doesn't have a constituency, such as many of the other projects she had mentioned. The alternative we thought of was being able to build a pod, which would be a lot less. But it's going to take a lot of research on that because, first off, we don't know if there is enough land at our current location. I think there is, but the other problem is where the infrastructure. We'd have to figure out how to tie it into our existing facility in order to use the core, core, core functions such as the kitchen and booking and all that. But that is an alternative. But it came, we, we got an estimate of about $10 million on that. But we just don't know until we would hire somebody to look at it to see if, if that's, if that's possible. Man, that's pretty much it. Got anything else?
How, how long of a time would that probably, would that possibly give us?
Before we get in some real-
Yes.
Can I answer this?
Yeah.
So that does change things a little bit, and it does make it a little bit easier to house individuals when they come in and keep them separated using a pod style. However, the rest of the detention center that we currently have is almost 50 years old. It is a linear style design. The pod styles are nice, and that's, that's one of the ways that, that the new age of detention centers are going. And that section will meet code. The rest of it will not. So the SEDC is still going to see it as, yes, we'll probably give you a little bit more time. I don't know how long we can talk with Blake on that. They do a great job. They come in, they inspect, they show us where our deficiencies are. Our deficiencies are, we don't have enough single occupancy cells that we can utilize. Okay? The pod does give us more of that. Okay, so that would help. It's still not going to be able to cause any, anything with, like, our females that we house, our mental health. That can help us with some of the mental health, any males that have mental health, that can help us with those. But it's still a limited fix. But we do understand that a limited fix is better than no fix. So my only concern there as a taxpayer would be if you do, if you do a nice pod, and then you have to change locations to put a jail, what's going to happen to that nice building?
You'd probably end up having to, in the future, and that probably won't be in our lifetime. You probably would end up having to tear down the existing structure and just build around it. I'm talking about for the future.
Right.
It would probably give us 15 more, 20 more years.
How much land do we actually have out there?
I don't know the exact acreage out there, but it goes up to College Park Apartments. It goes up to what used to be the Solar Homes at Grand Homes. Then it goes up to just behind the Little Cricket and Tom Abraham's-
Landscape.
Landscape, uh-
Land, landscaping.
Got it mixed up. Surveying, not landscaping. And then there's a vacant lot on the corner that somebody owns. I do not know who owns that.
If we went, if we went ahead and bit the whole project and said, okay, let's replace the entire jail system, would we be looking at building the jail somewhere else? Because you've still got to house these people on that property, and I don't, I don't believe you're telling me there's enough room there. Maybe you are, that we would build a new jail on the same property or not?
I think it could hold a pod, which a pod is basically, you know, there are various shapes, but it basically is a, a building that has cells along the exterior outside when they're not in their cells. I think we probably got enough room there for a nice pod, depending on whether we have to move all that infrastructure. So I think we have enough room for that, but we would not have enough room. Well, let me back up. I think you would have enough room if you just completely obliterated everything out there and, you know-
But what would you do with the people in the meantime?
Well, there would be a situation of where we, we did a minimal of this when we did the renovation before. The sheriff in Lawrence County was extremely gracious and allowed us to take the prisoners up there. And we just ran a transport shuttle between the two. And he was more than nice about helping us with that. I don't know that we're in a situation in our current environment that we'd find anybody to do that. Not anywhere close. You know, Charleston County would probably house inmates for us, but that's a long trip. And, but it, it, it wouldn't be practical, I don't think, to tear it down and start all over at that site. So we would have to find an alternate site, and then find an alternate site if the county did not own the land. We'd have to buy land.
Have, does, have you looked at county properties to see if there are any county properties that we currently own that could be utilized to build a new detention center? If that's the direction this thing went in?
The, there is a place at the Old County Home that we actually had laid out for the 2004 jail that we were looking at. And it's still available. I mean, it's, it's behind the Old County Home and the old Public Works Changang facility. That one ran into some very stiff opposition from the business owners and the neighbors. And that's what- And that's what, excuse me, that's what stopped that. And then we moved to another location that the county had option on. And that particular site, the same thing happened. So by the time we got through with that, the money had run out. We hadn't spent any money, but it just got reallocated to other counties. So the site at thirty-four and I-26 is still available. And I mean, I feel reasonably assured that the neighborhood would probably feel the same way.
Yeah, I'd say probably. Anywhere you locate, you're gonna have that issue.
Well, and that's, nobody wants, nobody wants a jail in their backyard. That is a fact.
Sheriff, I'm gonna flashback to my previous life with you. And the other thing I would ask is in the pod system, the critical infrastructure of the jail, the kitchen, the medical facilities, the IT infrastructure, the booking, everything is in that old facility. Would any of that change if you did the pod? So all you did was, you're still gonna have that in a fifty-year-old facility with all the repercussions that come from having that.
That's right. It's just an alternative and you still have, you know, I get a, like getting a knee replacement. I got a new knee, but I'm a sixty-year-old body.
But now my hips don't work.
Yeah. True.
Yes, sir.
And of course, again, we are fully aware of the expense of it. What a great way of being able to pay for a critical infrastructure and a required infrastructure. But it's horribly expensive and it would, it would not, you know, leave anybody else anything else. And but it's a good way of paying for it, but.
Is our ultimate liability, responsibility for the jail? I mean, I know we have had problems on inspections in the past. I'm sure other jails throughout South Carolina probably also have some of the same issues. But do we have a timeline? Is there some, some criteria? I mean, at some point, like in school systems, you lose your credibility and they just shut you down if you don't comply. I mean, are we at a point right now that's not where we wanna be? It wasn't really good. We got, you know, getting our hands slapped. Are we at a point where, you know, we're gonna lose the ability to house people? Can you elaborate some there?
I think everything but right now, you said, is true, except losing the ability to house people. In two thousand and four, we were at that point when council put the money in and did some upgrades to certain things like going away from the keys in the door to where you had electronic open. And so you didn't, you know, if you had a fire, you didn't have to go and actually turn the lock. You could just pull a release and the doors would open. That bought us a little bit of time. The second buying of time, and it goes back to Henry Summer always said, the Band-Aid, put the Band-Aid on it when he was chairman of council in two thousand and four. You know, we put the Band-Aid on that and then we changed the Band-Aid twenty sixteen. And that was because of the sewer system was totally collapsed and antiquated. We actually, we fixed it, but we didn't fix it the way, we didn't have enough money to fix it the way it needed to be fixed, but we adequately fixed it, let's put it that way. I don't think right now we are in imminent danger of closing the facility. But South Carolina Department of Corrections has that ability to do that. And I don't know that there's a desire to do that right now to anybody. I would venture to guess of all the forty-six counties, well, there's forty-five counties that have a jail because Lee County and Sumter County run a joint, run a joint jail. So it's forty-five jails out of forty-six counties. I'd venture to say we're probably in the bottom ten percent in facilities. Todd travels around, Mr. Johnson travels around the state and goes into a lot of them. And most of the smaller counties are in bad shape. And we, we're a medium county, so we're falling in that. But I don't know that there's a desire to close a jail down because it would be an extreme hardship, just like moving the inmates if we wanted to do construction. It would be an extreme hardship. And I don't know that they'd want anybody to do that. But my guess would be if we had a critical incident, then it's like everything else, you know, when you have a critical incident, they kick the person when they're down. And that's subject to happening, excuse me for interrupting, sir, but that's subject to happening with a jail. Ask your, Mr. McDonald, Mike could address this, and Jay from the legal standpoint. But unfortunately, that's probably one of your biggest liabilities on a county is the operation of a jail. Tremendous when something happens, especially in today's legal environment. There's just tremendous amounts of liability and money that are put out. Charleston County just got through settling a huge one and Ory County just got through settling a huge one. And I was told today, Ory County is out of the incident involving mental health transports. That's not over with yet. They thought it was, but it's not. And here's the thing about the county, we're dealing with this right now as we speak, accepting of prisoners. And here's the bad part about the jail. It's the only facility that's open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in most counties, other than the emergency department. So your mental health patients are either gonna wind up in the emergency department or in the jail. And in many cases, they go to the emergency department and then wind up in the jail, which is not the place for many, if not most, that are mental health patients. You've got somebody that's inebriated or in a stupor from alcohol and or drugs and they're brought to the jail. And we, by standards, we require whomever is bringing them to take them to the emergency department to get evaluated. But there's some contention saying that that's not my job. So they wanna dump it off on the county, which is very common because, you know, the county's the building block for everything else. So it's a tremendously litigious place for many things, whether it's facilities or whether it's just absolute housing of people. So it's one of those things that we have to do, but how do we do it is the conundrum.
You said something that, and I'm just brainstorming, asking questions here for learning for myself. But you mentioned that two counties jointly own a facility. Do you know if there'd be any interest between Newbury and Lawrence, you know, Saluda or some other contiguous county to?
I think Saluda's in the process of.
Saluda is getting a new facility. They've been working on that for the last couple of years. Lawrence's facility is not too terribly old. Fairfield's facility is fairly new. Greenwood, I don't know on that. I can talk to Lonnie on that. Union County has an older facility, I know, and they just combined their, their worksite guys as well. They used to have a.
Well, they had two, Union had two facilities. They had a lockup and then they had a work camp, which were two separate facilities. At one time, they were managed, one was managed by the sheriff and the other was managed by the public works director. That was sentencing, making you go out and like work on the roads. But it was two separate sites. We worked with Saluda two thousand and two to two thousand and four. We met, I don't know how many times. I did not run the jail at the time, but I was on the committee. So we met and met and met and looked at sites, talked about what it was. The biggest problem that we couldn't overcome was Newbury is approximately three times the size of Saluda as far as population. And couldn't figure out who, again, I think the question you asked, Mr. Bose, about joint projects, who would, who would own it, who would manage it? That was the sticking point. And then Saluda, basically, at that point in time, we just could not get over that hurdle. Saluda decided, and they did basically the same thing we did. The sheriff's office was placed in a different facility. And they took the sheriff's office and the police department, it was just like ours, and they turned it into extra jail space, which got them through to right now. And I think if they haven't issued a contract, I.
I don't know for sure.
But that was a stumbling block on that. We did look at that.
I wasn't suggesting that. I just wondered if that was an option. It might be considered or approached or discussed.
Yeah, it certainly would be an option. And we looked at it back then. Like I said, we met at least twice a month for I don't know how many months to try to come through and find a place and how we were gonna do it and who was gonna manage it. Then when it got, like, we'd reached an agreement in principle, then it got down to the numbers, people, and that's when it fell apart.
I'm gonna ask one other question. Some of these new, newer facilities being constructed, how are they being funded by those counties? Do you know that information?
Some of it, I don't know, we can, we can do some more detailed research. But some of it's done by the revenue bonding where they run out bids and space to the federal marshal. That's not a bigger thing as it once was. The other is, some of them are using the funds that they charge municipalities to house the inmates, which we do not do here. They use that as the revenue source. And I think most of them are by revenue bonds or just, I'm out of my league here, but general obligation bonds, is that right?
Lawrence just used their debt limit bonds. They've kinda done segments over time, three segments, ten years apart, they issued a jail bond under their debt limit.
Could we build a jail and use several, several CPST projects over the course of, what, fourteen, fifteen years?
Sure. You know, it's really, if it works towards the way they need to be standard, you can always build a building with CPSD and seven years later, build another building for the same general use. So, sure, you can do that.
Couple of things, Lee. Blake Taylor, is he still the one that's?
Mm-hmm. He's still around.
Okay.
He just got his braces off.
Huh?
He just got his braces off.
Okay. Anyway, I know he's been doing this for a long time and it's been kinda overseeing, I get jail, I guess, for a long time. A couple of things that came to point. I think you made the comment that they were charging the municipalities for services of the jail. And I know we don't do that now and I'm not promoting the fact that we do that at all. I'm just saying if you wanna talk about a joint project, that's really a joint project because we serve, or not we, because every town, every municipality is part of this county. So it's not we provide for them. But if we're, if we're looking at it from that perspective, that would be a joint project, I guess you could say, that could be shared by everyone. The other thing, I know we talk about the bond referendums, but that also means, yes, it's spread out over time, but it still means our taxpayers are paying for all of it. If we do the CPSD, a lot of the people that actually come into our communities will be helping to pay for a need that, I hate to say need, but in the world we live in, it is truly a need. It's something you're gonna have to always have. You talk about liability, the better the structure, the less chances that somebody escaping is. So that does help protect our community and our citizens more. Is it one of those beautiful spotlight facilities that you would turn around and be, you know, it's not like, I think somebody may have been less used the word sexy project. We don't have, that's not a sexy project. It's not a Piedmont Technical College. It's not a eight hundred megahertz system that, you know, in case of crisis, everybody's served by. But it's one of those things that eventually is gonna be called out and we're gonna have to do it. So I'm not sure what projects are gonna come to the table. And again, we as a council can only put ours out there. It's actually the selection committee that will do the final selection of. And we as a council clearly need everybody to understand that we won't vote on anything but a final project, a final slate of projects. We won't get to change or edit it once that committee does it. So, but I think the taxpayers, every county, I mean, every county citizen, every municipality needs to understand that eventually this is gonna be something that's gonna surface and we're gonna have to face it, whether we pay for it with our tax dollars that locally. Now, again, we had talked the other night or the other day about possibility of a grant rider. I mean, could we potentially get some grant money? Could we potentially get some money from the state? I mean, that's all maybes, but when you go to talk about the volume of money we're talking about, you're not gonna get a grant that's gonna cover anywhere close to that, I would not think.
No, I don't think so either. Because of some of the limitations. And I tell you, in today's environment, you know, they want to have better corrections facilities, but they don't generally want you to put anybody inside the facility. So it's kind of a antithesis of needs, so to speak. But I will tell you something about the capital sales tax project, if I can take a point of personal liberty. The eight hundred megahertz radio system has been a blessing for public safety. It has made it a lot easier on the people out there doing the work to have that ability to talk to the fire department, the police department, all, everybody on one system. And the other beautiful part of it is everybody around us, with the exception of Saluda County, is on that network. And I don't know how many times since we've been on that network that we just switch a channel and able to talk directly to the officers in the field. And it's, you know, I guess in a way it wasn't kind of one of those pretty projects either, but it was a very useful project and it has worked. And we also, the fire department especially, they can go in a burning building and have communications when they didn't have it before. I can't attribute it to saving a life per se, but it sure makes it a lot easier on them. So I think that was a great choice of money. I know it was painful because it's expensive and it's still expensive because you got to maintain it. But it was a good project and we appreciate that from the, I not only speak for the sheriff's office, but I also speak for fire rescue and EMS. And it probably benefited EMS most of all.
Again, it's a lot of money, but if your loved one wanted just helping to get you there, it's not as much as it could be. And that could be any of us at any given time.
And that was a project we never would have paid for on our own.
No. All right, other questions for our wonderful law enforcement?
Thank you. We're here to, we're here to work with you all on it and understand the parameters.
Well, thanks and thanks for all you and your team do in all capacities, from dispatch to jail to on the road. Thanks for everything that your department provides. All right, let's see. All right, let's see. Ms. Brimmer?
That, um, that concludes mostly what we have for you today. As I said, as we received notice of intents from either of the departments within the county or those seeking our sponsorship, we'll forward them to you so you can see what's being requested. If you will just look over, or if you have ideas that you want the county to look at for county sponsorship, if you will inform us to lead us in a somewhat of a path prior to the selection of the engineering firm or shortly after, anything that we can do in between, it is time consuming regardless of when it is. But if you think of things, we're just asking for some direction from you. Mr. McDonald, most likely, I'd like for him to add his thoughts into this. He's been in the discussions with us with everything that we've done so far. And that's pretty much what we have for you at this point.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, would you like to have a few words? Or as many as you want?
There'll be a few. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate what Karen has, has, uh, shared with you tonight. And we know and, and didn't expect that you're gonna get tonight to a decision point and we're gonna walk out with a list that we're gonna, uh, ultimately present to the commission. But, uh, we did want to begin that process. There are obviously some very worthy projects on this list. I don't know what your feelings are about some of them, maybe you already have some ideas in mind about which will rise to the top. In the end, I hope you do, uh, because that will help us. The discussion about the, the detention facility, we have had that in the administrator's office and I've communicated back and forth, or, or he's communicated with me mostly, the sheriff has, about, uh, the need for that facility. So, uh, everything that he said is absolutely right. It's very problematic in trying to locate a, a site for a facility. Nobody's gonna want it, uh, as crucial as it is and, and, uh, it's something that you can't get around, but it's one of the toughest parts, and I know this from having gone through this process originally when I was there, one of the toughest parts of creating a new jail facility from, from the start is finding a place to put it, because nobody's gonna want it. So, uh, that can take a, a good bit of time, and of course, it's very expensive. So, you're looking at not a few months to go through that process, it, it will be years. Uh, and I think everybody would agree with that. So, just keep that in mind as you look to the future in dealing with these potential citations from the, uh, from the Department of Corrections, because it, this is not a quick project. So, again, just, just to reiterate, I, I know that's a critical project and it's not, as, as Mr. Livingston said, it's not a sexy project. So, it's not something that the voters are gonna, uh, jump out to vote for, uh, most likely. And especially, they're not gonna jump out and vote for it to be in their neighborhoods. So, those are just some of the obstacles that you're gonna see. But at any rate, we do, would like to get your feedback on these projects that are on the list. If you would like, on the other hand, or in conjunction with your thoughts, if you would like, uh, recommendations from the staff as to where, uh, at least the staff or the professional, uh, employees of this county see the most need, we can provide that to you as well. We've had that discussion in, uh, the administrator's office. And if you would like that input, uh, we're happy to provide that to you, uh, as well. So, again, we're here to, we're here to help you, uh, and accommodate you in any way that we can to get to ultimately a final list that will go to the, the ballot next November. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, questions for Tony?
I want to go back to, and that, I, in the back of my mind, I have something that might be a potential, but I'm still trying to wrap my hands around this joint ownership between a municipality and the county on a project. Uh, with the November thirtieth deadline being the deadline for when projects have to be submitted to the county. So, that would tell me, I guess, that if we jointly sponsor a project with a municipality, we would have to have that, not the, the final contractual part of it in place, but we would have to have an agreement on the project and with the municipality by November thirtieth to have it on the list. Is that the date there and?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, Mr. Hip, rather, uh, my understanding is, yes, uh, we would need that information by the end of the month. I, I don't think you would need the detailed agreement as to who's gonna own and who's gonna manage and who's gonna operate. I do, I do think, at least in my opinion, I do believe those discussions need to take place prior to the joint project being, uh, submitted and, and put before you, because it's better to know upfront, at least conceptually, that somebody's gotta operate whatever the project will be. Somebody's gotta, uh, have personnel, most likely, to, to run whatever the facility may be. So, at least some preliminary discussions, in, in my opinion, need to take place, even though a detailed agreement would not be ready, I'm sure, by the end of the month.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Only thing, one thing I thought about, uh, too, we were talking about location, location, location. I think since that last study, or since the last expansion or jail talk concept, we do now own the Kavanaugh track, I don't think was available at that time too, which is right outside the city limits, which would make it convenient to everybody. But again, just, just food for thought on that. And again, we've got a lot of other, on attachment C, we got a lot of other projects that could be entertained. And of course, we do have each of the participating municipalities that will be coming to the table with, with things. So, right now, I guess the biggest thing I can say for council is have an open mind and, uh, and, and be thinking and talking to people around and see what we got as possibilities.
Do we, do we have a, uh, allocation by money at this point? Or is it all, I mean, is, uh, when it comes to municipalities and counties, we don't have, like, the county's good, gonna get forty percent and the municipality's sixty. There is no predetermined allocation, right?
This might-
Each, each project has to have the estimated cost next to it on the ballot. And that's how the cost get, get, uh-
So-
How you get there is up to that commission.
Mr. Hip, just to answer, there's no earmarking. The best example was when we had PTC, that was a very sexy project, but it consumed an awful lot of what was available. And that's kind of a, that was a joint project, I guess you could say, because that was between Technical College and the county. But there's, there hasn't been any, in the past, at least in my experience dealing with it, what the commission tries to look to is they want to sell the vote. So, they're looking to try to have projects around the county so that somebody doesn't feel like it's all going to in the city of Newberry, or it's going to the lake or something like that. But there's no, there's no allocation, there's not-
Yeah, I, I, that part, I, I think I understood. But what I was just kind of getting at was when we look at our county projects, you know, are we looking at choosing projects that are gonna be twenty million out of the thirty? Or are we gonna look at projects that are gonna be fifty? I mean, when we look at these projects, once we get estimated costs, that's gonna be part of our consideration, I would think.
I'm not bad wrong, I tried to cut you off, Les, but I think you got a very valid point there. In the past, haven't we looked at the projects that we had and kind of ranked them as to how we wanted to submit them? And I think we each all, each person voted on like the top five or something of that magnitude and-
I think the last time in twenty seven, uh, twenty sixteen, whatever, we had, um, it was either eight or ten projects and we all ranked them in order of our preference. Each council member did and we tallied up the number of points each project got. And that's how we ended up selecting our projects.
And then where it falls and how they disperse it amongst that committee is not up to us, it's strictly up to them. And then we have the slate that then will come back to us. And either we voted down or we voted to move forward, one or the other. Am I correct? Okay.
All right, um, item number seven, directions to staff regarding CPST project submissions. I think we've got a pretty good outline here. Is, is, is our council just to tell them to continue moving forward with the project plan as outlined?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all in, uh, well, I guess we need a real vote on that, but anybody object to moving forward in that, that particular direction? Mary, are you okay with moving forward with what's outlined?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay, do we need to take a formal vote on that? All right, public comments. Do we have anybody from the public out there that wants to make a comment on this? All right, council comments, we probably commented out, but anybody on council want to comment?
I'd just like to thank Sheriff and Daniel and, uh, uh, for coming. Karen, what a great job of walking us through that and giving us a good vision. And so, I'm just appreciative of, of, you, you, you dumbed it down where even I could understand it. So, I'm appreciative of that. So, Mr. McDonald, great job by everybody on staff, sir.
Yeah, I guess a CPST for dummies?
That's right.
Yeah, uh, yeah, she did a great job with putting that together. Thing of it is, it, it may be a, a, almost a CPST for dummies for y'all, but it's, it's a lot of effort. It's gonna be a lot of thoughts and, and, and in-depth analysis of what's gonna be best for our county moving forward with this. It's, it's not an easy task, regardless of how easy she's made it look on paper. So, it's, it's gonna be a challenge. All right, anybody else got any council comments? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mrs., uh, Reader, we are adjourned. Thank you. That is the tip of ice.
That was the tip of the iceberg.